... sign they're put up displaying the prices. Also, the phone carrying issue was fixed and there are new holders put out sometime last week. Thank you for your attention. Any questions?
That was a nice crowd that you did have at the dance and I heard everything was safe and ran perfectly. The superhero theme. I enjoyed the parade myself to see all the kids come on to different clubs and what they come up with. I know. I didn't get any candy though. It was a good night. I enjoyed it. Any other questions from Iowa? And I almost forgot about the lunch prices. Yeah, I'm glad that was fixed too because that's what you actually addressed and I didn't even know they weren't even listed at the cafeteria anymore. So, thank you. And that's what a different set of eyes. We appreciate it. You're more than welcome to stay or you can go. It depends what you do. You're welcome. Have a nice night. And now, our favorite part of the evening is the Students of the Month and we're going to turn it over to each principal. I say this every time and I don't get tired of saying this. It is very difficult to get this honor. If you think about it, we have 3,800 students. At the end of the year, we might choose 27. And to be one of those 27 out of 38, your children have to be doing something amazing because it is very hard to win. And when you read about what they've done to achieve this honor through each of the principals, it's going to make you feel good about how you're raising your kids and your grandkids. And because remember, you send them out the door and they can choose to do anything they want when they come. They can behave any way they want. They can act any way they want, but they choose to act correctly, they choose to act nicely, they choose to give it their all, to help others, to give it a hundred. So even without your guidance there, they're doing the right thing. So you should be very proud of that. And at the end of next year, we're going to invite all the Students of the Month because we don't have time for the celebration afterwards in September to our first football game, we do a celebration for them because it is important. But sit back and listen to why they're chosen and when we're done, we're going to take a group picture of the four of them for the newspaper and for social media. And then afterwards, if you want to stay, you can. If you want to go, no one's ever stayed. You can go. But this is great when you hear what the kids do at all the different grades levels. And we're going to start with Mr. Schwartz and feel free to also give us an update about anything at your school as well.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Harris. It's my honor to introduce Juliette Briscoe as Level Green Student of the Month. Juliette is the daughter of Bethany and Cody Briscoe and a proud sister of Bailey, a kindergarten, Clara, a third grader, and baby Millie. A third grade student herself, Juliette is a dedicated learner who always puts forth her best effort. She credits her parents' encouragement for inspiring her to do so well academically. Her favorite subjects are math and reading. She enjoys math because it is useful every day and challenges her to solve new problems. And she loves reading because books, especially the Weird School and Dire Wimpy Kids series, allow her to explore stories and gain new information. Outside of school, Juliette dances competitively with tap being her favorite style. She also dreams of becoming an elementary teacher one day and often practices by teaching with her younger sisters at home. The staff at Level Green had many wonderful things to say about Juliette. She's an exceptionally bright, hardworking, and responsible young lady who approaches each day with enthusiasm and positivity. Juliette consistently demonstrates a strong work ethic, always striving to meet the goals she sets for herself. She's eager to take on challenges and actively engages in class discussions whether by asking thoughtful questions or building on the idea of her classmates. Not only is she an excellent student academically, but she also embodies kindness, cooperation, and respect in all she does. Juliette's cheerful demeanor and welcoming spirit create a positive classroom atmosphere, making her a joy to teach and a role model to her peers. She is admired for her compassion, encouragement, and willingness to help others, and she demonstrates maturity beyond her years by balancing academic success with sincere care for those around her. Juliette consistently reflects the core values of Level Green Elementary, both in and out of the classroom. We are proud of her accomplishments and grateful for the energy, leadership, and kindness she brings each day. Juliette Briscoe truly represents the very best of our PT school community, and we're honored to celebrate her as this month's Elementary Student of the Month.
Mr. Schwartz, anything about your school that you want to share?
Yeah, we're off. Thanks, Dr. Harris. We're off to a great start at Level Green this year. Our staff's working hard to ensure every student receives targeted support in ELA during their win and workshop times. Teachers are analyzing data and planning lessons that both meet enrichment and intervention needs, and we're excited to see the students' growth this year. Also recently, we hosted a well-attended grandparent breakfast and we truly appreciated all the grandparents who joined us. Last week, our fifth grade students enjoyed their Deer Valley trip, a PT tradition, and we thanked the board for making this experience possible. Also at Level Green, we launched a new initiative, LG Cares, where students focus each month on supporting a meaningful cause. This past month, they created thank you cards for our local first responders, and next month, we will focus on breast cancer awareness. And finally, I'd like to thank our PTO for their ongoing support and dedication. They often provide engaging activity for our students and assistance for our staff, and their contributions make a real difference in our school. So it's truly appreciated. So, thank you.
Great shout out to them. I appreciate that too because I know what difference they do make. All right. Next for our Student of the Month, Dr. Horvath from Trafford Elementary School.
Okay. I am proud to announce Zach Kiefer. Zach is a fifth grader at Trafford Elementary. He's the son of Amy Kiefer. He has two siblings, Josh who's in seventh grade and Anthony who's now in ninth grade up here. And he has two cats named Strawberry and Rosie. Zach said that he likes to play baseball. He likes to play with his friends and go to the park at Fairmont Avenue. And I actually watched him play baseball one time and he's pretty good. He plays catcher, third, shortstop, and first base. So I have a feeling we're going to see him somewhere up here at some point playing baseball. He wants to shout out his best friends, his little posse over there that came to visit with him or came to support him today, Eli, Kara, and Marilyn. They are his best friends and his support system and he wanted to make sure I mentioned that. So, here they are. And his brother Josh is also there. Yeah, and his mom.
What grade is Josh in now? Is he?
Seventh, right? He's in seventh grade. Yep. Zach told me that math is his favorite subject and I asked him why and he said, "Because I'm good at it." Which makes a lot of sense to me. He told me he wants to be a teacher and a baseball coach when he grows up. So I told him I'd let Mr. Cortez know that and he's coming for his job. I talked to his mom on the phone and mom says that he's always helpful. He brightens everyone's day when he's around. And when he was at Deer Valley, it was very, very quiet at the house. Josh says, again, he's very friendly, he's happy until he comes home. That's what Josh said. And I asked if they get along well and he said they get along great, they play games together, but sometimes they fight, but he's looking forward to when he grows up a little bit and they can do some more things together. When he's in like middle school, right Josh? I guess that's what he said. So, I asked teachers then because when I asked about who would be the Student of the Month, this was a unanimous choice. So, he was a unanimous choice for Teacher of the Month, for Student of the Month. I'll read some of the comments. So, the first teacher said that Zach is a great kid. He's one of my go-to students. If ever I need anything delivered or helped or anything like that, this is who I go to. He's my go-to guy. And everyone, every comment said, "Mannerly, respectful, and kind." Every one of them. His third grade teacher, Mr. Boudash, has this to say. "I had the pleasure of having Zachary Kiefer in my third grade classroom. He was a true role model for other students. His actions proved this both in and out of the classroom. Inside the classroom, Zach was very attentive. He took his work seriously and always tried to earn great grades. Outside the classroom, he treated everyone with respect. Zach also had a great sense of humility about him. He played the games at recess fairly, he never excluded anybody, and he never showed off. He took the game seriously, but for him, it was as much about the other kids as it was about himself. As I mentioned, he also took his work seriously inside the classroom and many of his classmates followed his lead. I was fortunate to have him in my class. He is well-rounded and truly led by example." Another teacher says, "He is kind, conscientious, eager to learn, and always a rule follower. He strives to do his best and always gives 100% effort. He is a joy to have in class and to all that come in contact with him, they appreciate his positive attitude. Zach demonstrates respect for both his peers and teachers, setting a wonderful example for others. His genuine enthusiasm for learning makes him a valuable member of a classroom community." And then another, but finally another teacher I think you had in second grade said, "Zach Kiefer is one of the kindest boys that I know. He is always offering to help his teachers, holding doors open for others, bending over backwards to help his friends. He makes sure he always includes everybody. He walks around with a smile on his face and works hard at school. Because I've known Zach for a while and I had him and his brothers in school, I know him a little bit better. He's an amazing help at home with his mom, to his mom. Anyone who crosses paths with Zach in their lifetime should consider themselves lucky. I thankfully had the pleasure and am the lucky person to have known him. I couldn't think of anyone else more deserving than him for this honor." I can add too that he says hello to me every, if I see him 35 times in a day, he will say hello to me 35 times.
Amy, anything you want to share about Trafford Elementary School?
Unfortunately, we had a little bit of a, we had a tragedy this week with Mr. Martinelli's passing. And we are building up our staff here, trying to start the whole grieving process with everybody. That's one thing that I do have to mention because he was a valued member of our staff. So what we are doing is we're focusing on team-building activities in the building with our staff and with the kids and just trying to do things to help everybody with this process. We are also then on the academic side, we're planning our book club coming up. We're doing a community, parents don't even know this yet because we didn't send them home yet. But we're doing a parent, a family and student book club where the students should read the book at home with their parents and then come in and have a book club meeting. I actually did this with Mr. Schwartz a long time ago and I thought I'd bring it to Trafford again. So, we're starting that. We planned that today. Our trunk-or-treat event is on Friday, which is very, very heavily attended. We couple that with our book fair. So we will do the trunk-or-treat event and a book fair and then the families can come into the building and buy whatever books they need. That's coming up. And then we also just had our Deer Valley, our students come back. And I have to say, I asked one particular student if he had a good time and he said he could not think of one thing that was, he said, "Everything was awesome." And I said, "What in particular?" And he said, "Everything." So, everything was awesome apparently at Deer Valley. So, that's what's happening.
That's the slogan.
Everything's awesome.
All right, thank you. Dr. Cap from Trafford Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Harris.
And I have to tell you, Dr. Cap, I saw you marching and flying in the parade.
Oh, it was fun, Dr. Harris.
With your superhero costume. I have never seen you so happy. You were amazing and your smile was wonderful.
We had a good time.
Lot of candy was thrown.
We had lots of candy.
You really enjoyed it. So I appreciate you going. I appreciate you having the effort. Your excitement was contagious.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Matty Gelia. Matty tonight is accompanied by her mom, stepdad, and brother, which is in fifth grade at Sunrise. She's currently in eighth grade. She has a 3.5 GPA. She's involved in track. She is the drama stage manager and also anchors the morning announcements. She excels in foreign languages and science. Her ambitions are to attend Florida University and focus on the medical field, maybe possibly be a surgeon or go into anesthesiology. So I had to speak to your teacher since I'm new there and had to get some words about you and they were very kind and the teachers think a lot about you. Mr. Urosik stated, "Matty is such a cool customer. I don't think she ever had a bad day. She's always pleasant and smiling. She does a great job at reading the room and makes sure everyone is included all the time. She is the type of student that a teacher will often say, 'I wish I had a class full of Mattys.'" Mrs. Lamanna stated, "Kind and caring student who consistently brings a positive attitude and a bright smile every day. She always gives 100% effort in everything she does and approaches challenges with determination. She is truly a model student and a joy to be around." Mrs. Lockwood, "Matty is respectful, hard-willing, and diligent. Maddie is a pleasure in class and I appreciate her dedication to all tasks, whether it's independent or group work, she raises the bar." Mrs. Rogers, "Matty is a true pleasure to have in class. She is a dedicated student who always puts forth her best effort, produces quality work, and adds to class discussion with insightful comments and questions. She is kind and respectful to everyone and helps to make our school community a better place." Mrs. Riston stated, "Over the past two years, in concert and jazz band, she has had the privilege of watching you grow, not only as a talented musician but also as an exceptional person. You will not find another student as kind, caring, and respectful. Maddie has a truly remarkable positive energy that resonates throughout the classroom." And finally, Mrs. Manupelli. "Matty smiles often, works diligently, stays on top of her tasks, and achieves success. Madeline will remain kind, courteous, and focused young lady as she navigates her school years and beyond. It is a pleasure to have her in class." Congratulations, Maddie, for being Trafford Middle School Student of the Month.
And Maddie, since you're the stage manager, you might want to see Mrs. Haberberger, right by you. Wave your hand, Mrs. Haberberger. Make sure you see her because she's in charge of all the drama and the guild and she could definitely use your help next year. Because I already saw her give like the two thumbs up when he says stage manager. I watched you, Jen. That's good. So good. I'm glad you're involved in that. To Mr. Dr. Cap, what else is going on at Trafford?
Sure, Dr. Harris. So last week, we had our, it was homecoming and I was informed that our pep rally last Friday was going to be two hours long. So, I kind of got a little nervous at two hour pep rally, but it was two hours and it was very interactive with all the students. So it was totally opposite of what the high school. But it was very interesting and they were very active for the two hours, but it was very enjoyable.
They also invited us to it.
Yes. The elementary were there for the first nice comment. Also, we will be having a fundraiser that goes towards the winter extravaganza, which I heard is even a bigger pep rally further down the line.
Your winter extravaganza is huge at Trafford. Legendary.
It's an extravaganza. And then, the eighth grade farewell. So if the students sell items, there's a mega party and if they sell so many items, they go to Urban Air. So it's a really big fundraiser for the year. And at the end of the month, we're starting to look at careers and down at the David Lawrence Convention Center, they have a middle school career fair for students for the construction trades. So there are 30 construction trades going to be there. We're opening it to all students to see if they have any interest. It's all hands-on experience and to get them thinking about the future and getting on it now and not waiting until they get to the high school level.
Star of the young. That's perfect.
That's it.
Love it. Thanks for all you do. Good stuff. And finally, Mr. Quilio, High School.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. If you can come up here, Chloe, front and center. Maddie, this is Chloe. You'll be taking her spot when she graduates this year. So pay attention. It's my absolute honor to recognize an outstanding student, leader, and role model, Chloe Stock, as the Penn Trafford High School Student of the Month. Chloe is joined here this evening with her dad, Jason, mom, Becky, and her biggest supporter, her grandfather. So welcome here tonight. Chloe's a senior and is enrolled in multiple Advanced Placement, College, and Honors courses. She has balanced her rigorous academics with involvement in a wide variety of activities, showcasing both her talent and her leadership. Chloe is a member of the National Honor Society, National Thespien Society, Drama Guild, Mock Trial, and both the Select Choir and Ovation Choir. She also co-founded the American Sign Language Club here at PT, which is an organization she helped build so her peers could begin developing fluency in American Sign Language. So thank you for that, Chloe. It's up and running and going strong. Her leadership extends beyond clubs. She's also the executive producer of our Penn Trafford Television Broadcasting Program, better known as PT TV. Chloe is trusted to run the show, from directing live broadcasts to resetting the equipment after the production. This responsibility requires creativity, technical expertise, and the ability to manage a team under pressure. And I always say, if you ever need to see a good example of controlled chaos or stress, go back behind the screen for a live production. It's quite the experience and you do a wonderful job controlling all the moving parts. All these skills she's demonstrated with excellence. Her goal is to get into broadcasting after earning her degree at possibly Duquesne University. Which is not on or behind the screen, she's onstage with Mrs. Haberberger here, who's here this evening. Don't forget to check out her role as Joe Marsh, I believe Joe Marsh in the fall play Little Women, which comes out November 14th. So if you need something to do, November 14th, make sure you check it out. Definitely will be a great show as always. Chloe is also child-oriented and community-minded, working as a gymnastics coach at Allison Bianchi Gymnastics in Trafford, where she helps children develop not only athletic skills but also the confidence and character that they need. She brings patience, enthusiasm, and joy to that role, which reflects the heart she puts into everything she does. Her skill set is obviously wide-ranging. She's CPR certified, creative, passionate, and dedicated to helping others, where she's accumulated over 100-plus community service hours here at the high school in the last four years. Chloe is described by her teachers as hard-working, kind, fun-loving, reliable, and respectful. She approaches every opportunity with positivity and a strong sense of responsibility. What sets Chloe apart is not just her list of accomplishments, but the way she uplifts those around her and leads by example. Chloe, your dedication, kindness, and creativity inspire us all. We cannot wait to see where your talents take you in the future. And on behalf of the Penn Trafford High School, congratulations on being Student of the Month this year.
And before we take the photo, anything you want to share about the high school that wasn't covered already?
Obviously, we talked about the homecoming, parade, the dance, the ringing of the bell against Gateway. Good job winning against them. We had a college fair last week. The marching band just recently won their competition a couple weeks ago and they'll be going on to Hershey here in a couple weeks. Obviously, the fall play in November 14th, make sure you check that out. Our paid survey is next Friday where all the 10th and 12th graders will be taking a survey to kind of collect information on mental health and stability. And just a shout out to all the teachers and students on all the changes we've made this year at the high school, from administration to the smart passes, to iPads, to the no-phone policy, just trying to make some changes at the high school and it's going very well so far. And they've embraced it and kept a positive attitude through all the changes. So kudos to all of them.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we're going to have our Student of the Month winner, Ms. Horvath. Harris, you're more than welcome to also take a photo behind the photo as well. Harris, you're more than welcome to also take a photo behind the, the photo as well.